The latest.
According in progress.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the liberal party for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, do you want to do your call?
Justin?
Here.
Jamie? Jack?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Matthew?
Here.
Shai?
Next on agenda is approval of minutes. We have a master plan workshop, May twen- May first, two thousand twenty-four, and a council meeting, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. You guys got any questions about either one of them? If you have questions, obviously need a motion to accept them. So, just the next motion. Second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yeah.
Matthew?
Yes.
Next on agenda is open hearing, public comment, anybody getting time?
Good evening. How are y'all doing? First thing I'd like to say is, uh, I left here last month after the workshop. Hopeful and pleased with the direction it looked like we were going to be going, and getting, actually making some plans on what we wanted our town to look like. I'm here today with a concern though, and I've noticed that there are still rezoned requests being approved. That seems to me like it's kind of negating the purpose of having a plan. So I'm requesting, is there a possibility of legally postponing any rezon approvals? Or if not, can we deny those until we actually have our plan? Six months to a year isn't going to make a huge difference on denials, but approvals, it could make a huge difference. So I'm asking that to take the time, give our city the time to plan, and our citizens the voice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
What else?
Good evening, Council. That's where let me leave the pleasure tonight, Mayor, that was an honor. Um, a couple of things, um. In regards to the PUD definitions that we're going to be voting on tonight, that you will be voting on tonight, um, I just have one slight concern, and I actually shared it with Justin on the phone last night. We've been trying to get, uh, kind of, I didn't know that that's what Sean was going to say, but. It's kind of hard for us to figure out if we're going to approve these PUDs when we don't really have, in other words, if we approve PUDs and we approve land rezones and stuff with our current map. Then that's, that's, it's, it's, it might actually create some challenges for us as we create the new map. Not saying that I'm, I don't know that I'm necessarily in agreement with just pausing and putting a more tone on everything. But in regards to the PUD definitions, those are very large chunks of land, well, a hundred and fifty acres plus is what you'll be voting on tonight, and when we have that much land coming up. Those are just very large tracts of land that now aren't quite as regulated as they would have been had we had the actual zoning restrictions that we had in the first place. Um, I, I'm honored that Mayor asked me to sit on a planning committee, and I realize that's just a committee, that you guys are the ones that make the decisions, and we're just basically a collective of people who give. Uh, opinions and, and, uh, hopefully some guidance. But real fast, I wanted to share with you something that I've, I've been on the, uh, the American Planning Association's website, I've been looking into the PUDs and how they've. Been structured over the last two decades, really, across different communities in the country, and I've done a lot of comparison. I haven't had a chance to look over our PUD rules that we're going to be voting on tonight as much as I'd like to. And one of the things that I'd like to see us do is to place that on just first reading. Um, to buy us maybe one more month of time to look at that, um, rather than suspending the rules and during an emergency. If there's some sort of a project going on right now that, that that PUD definition is, is resting on, I'm not aware of that, but. If there's not, I would, I'd like to see you guys just place that on first reading, vote on it tonight instead of trying to just suspend the rules and go all the way through with it, so we've got a little bit more time to look at it. Um, I wanted to share something real fast. Um, that I read on the American Planning Association's website of a gentleman. That, uh, basically has exact same concerns that I do. And when I saw this, I thought, man, that, that basically sums up the way I, I want to say it, so I'm just going to read this because it sums up the way that I, I feel about it pretty. Uh, pretty accurately. Um, if I can get it to open, give me just one second. Um. Wondering why good design, good design principles couldn't be codified into municipal zoning ordinances, um. There are a number of problems with the approach of the PUD, first from the perspective of an elected official, and I've seen this with, in some conversations I've had. With Justin, there are no guarantees that the planner's vision will be consistent with the community's vision. So by the time a proposed development reaches the planning commission or the city council, the parameters of the PUD have been painstakingly negotiated between planning staff and the developer without ever having been vetted by the community. At that point, community representatives can give proposal thumbs up or thumbs down, but that's about it. Second, the degree of alignment between the development proposal that's brought forth and the community's goals and values is too dependent. On the skills and values of the particular planner that's negotiating the provisions of the PUD. Most good smart growth development that we've seen around the country has been driven by a handful of visionary planners. Who knew what they were doing, and they possessed the communication skills needed to sell their vision to the community and perseverance needed to see that the vision was executed through to completion. What happens when that visionary moves on? There are some other things there too, but in an interesting time, I just. That meeting that we have, and we had the National Startup Planning Commission, they are, they are willing to assist us, since we don't have a professional planning department. They're willing to assist us in the creation of this, and I think it's an amazing resource that we should be tapping into. Um, and I just. That's, that's exactly it. When I said that we were, we were a community that was basically a blank canvas with all this land. Um, and that we can basically come up with a vision of what we want Hyphal to look like, whether that's, and I'm not saying one person or even one, a group of people. But if we could come into agreement about the city's identity, or purpose, or vision. Right now, our planning, uh, commission is chaired by a gentleman who has said several times over the, from that, from the chair, that the vision is centered. I don't, I don't, most people in the community I've talked to don't want to see Hyphal turn into center. I'm not saying we can't have, this isn't about population density and just wrapping the houses, Chris, overall thing.
I'll have you wrap it up.
Okay, that's, but I'm just saying, I, it'd be nice if we could just pump the brakes a little bit on the PUD thing, because it's just the, the size of the, of the land and the size of the project. And just hoping that everyone's giving a little bit more due diligence.
Thanks, sir.
Ryan, you got something?
Yeah.
Let me speak, uh, and appreciate you, uh, allowing us to serve on this committee that's going to be coming up to try to plan the city, I think, uh, you know. Us being here shows we're, you know, uh, I guess interested and, and really dedicated to what's going to be going on with the city in the future, um. I don't, can I ask a question? Because, uh, is there a reason, uh, that? One, is there a current PUD definitions that, you know, are different than these? And then is there a reason that we're, I guess, quickly voting on these tonight? Is there something going on, a project? And I know there was a previous PUD that came out that we voted down, but then we annexed some more land, and then there was talk during some meetings that we had that. Well, if we annex more land, then that'll be a significant change, so we can vote again before the year is up on that previous PUD that came before the thing, so. I don't know if that's why this is being pushed through, I'm just kind of curious on why it's kind of voted on tonight or whatever, and, and is there a reason for that, I guess, so. And it may be we're a meeting and we want new plans for a PUD, I don't know, so.
The, the PUD, I put stricter guidelines on it for smaller lots, anything smaller than, uh, a forty foot wide lot, so anything smaller than that, a lot stricter. Uh, bigger streets, wider streets in there, so trees, so it, it basically the changes are on it are stricter, stricter. You know, because I don't want, if, if people want to come here and build smaller lots, then they're actually out there a lot of hoops. If a developer wants to come in here, it's kind of encouraging the, the bigger ones, in, in, in my eyes. And for that, that question there, the other question is, no, there is not a PUD coming down the pipeline. And when the ordinance comes up here, the next item's agenda, I will, I was going to tell the council, you know, they put on the first reading tonight, playing a vote for it, oh, it's totally up to them. But there is no, there is no PUD, there is no rush for this, you know, I've been bringing this up for the last two or three meetings. Uh, that we're going over this for any inputs, you know, on the PUD, so I would like more input on it. Uh, we haven't got any input except for the changes I wanted to, to inflict on it, so. It's going to be totally up to the council if they want to do it on a first reading or pass all of you.
And, and I don't know how long this particular thing has been out there, I saw, you know, saw it in the packet that was sent out, that's the first time I saw it this week to be able to read over it and that sort of thing, so, um, so yeah, I think.
But also, in that committee, if, if the council did choose to pass all tonight. That committee could still make recommendations, we can still come back and change any of our, uh, zones, you know, put regulations on them as we see fit. As long as the planning commission, we can make the recommendation as the committee to the council, the councils agree, send it down to the planning commission, planning commission agrees, so send it back up to city council to be voted on.
And the only reason I ask about something coming down the pipeline is that if somebody was going to come in, then the planning commission would be bound by current PUD restrictions, and then we would be, is that true?
There is no PUD right?
There's not right now, so there's no PUD zoning, and we're creating one right now, so. So I mean, I'm in agreement that probably pumping the brakes is a good idea to. Look at this, decide on, how do we want this really to happen, because big, a hundred and fifty acres of big swaths of land, uh, that someone can come in and develop and do what they want it with, I think. I think after reading this, uh.
Oh, and the other thing is, on a normal subdivision like a, a RN.
Yeah.
The, the, uh, preliminary plan would only go to the planning commission, and it would never come to the city council, so on a PUD, also put in there. That the preliminary plan has to go to the planning commission and also the city council.
To be approved by both.
Yes.
That's it, yeah. Because we've already voted on the zoning.
Of what maybe the city council got told may be different than what the planning commission got told. So I want to make sure if, if, uh, whatever the developer tells the planning commission, city council, is true to what they said that they're going to do.
So just my preliminary kind of looking through this, and I hope we vote to maybe extend some time to look through a little closer each one of you guys, and. Guys, and, and also myself and other big people in the town, but, uh, you know.
Any recommendations?
Yeah.
I mean, don't, I, I'm not saying don't go over them, but s- send them to me, and we'll, I'll be more happy to plug them in.
No, and, and that's fine, I was just going to kind of, these are generalities, I'm not, I don't want specifics, but I think a lot of it is pretty vague and left to interpretation, I think, so. Oh, you know, maybe that's on purpose so that it's not locked in, and then somebody raises a PUD and they. Well, we met the, and then we're like, we don't like that, but you meant thanks to the planning commission, it's kind of bound by whatever the rules before them are, I don't know, but then some of it is left to a lot of interpretation of. Whether, you know, you're the mayor, the next mayor, or whoever it is that we've got these in place, so, so some of that is concerning to me, and, and. And then to some of the setback, like, you know, seven point five feet, I think on the side, I guess that would be house to house, uh.
So that's not house to house, so we specified in it because houses can build without a, a fascia, you know, a socket on it. And so it would be actually closer, so there's a twelve foot minimum, uh, socket, fascia.
Sure.
So it would be from edge of the softboard edge of soft, so it's not going from house to house, it's actually going from a twelve, it has to be a twelve inch, there has to be a twelve inch socket, I'll be right.
Now, you know, I think, talking about what's the distance between houses, uh, do we want four-story apartments like it mentions in here versus, I mean, there's, you know, requirements on all of those things, we want two-story, do we want? PUDs with all those things in them, two part of my concern is what, what's the need for a PUD in Hyphal? Um, do we have this big need to bring in all these people that would live in a PUD or not? I don't know, I mean, those are kind of things that. I think studies show, and what's the population growth, and are people moving in to go to which school district and that, and where are we planning kind of these things, I think those are all important topics. I think too, nothing that's mentioned in here is, uh, um, I would like to see, uh, uh, that it's required for a developer to pay for an independent, uh, environmental study. Uh, so the city's not owed on it, but we require them at the choosing of the city to choose an environmental study, or, you know, and the engineer to come and look at the plans. Because, you know, the PD has brought those earlier, would send water all down through my property, and then, you know, through the. Plans of building Douglas Cemetery up and things like that, but there was, you know, it seems like they bring in environmental studies of their own, but that's going to be a bias thing, so I think independent. Studies would be, and, and it'd be on them, you know what I mean, so.
I might have to wrap up, but all this stuff that you're talking about is very good, and that stuff that we will go over in the. In our, in our meeting, you know, our, our, our planning meeting, uh. So we need, you need to keep them and bring them up, and we can always come back, you know, even, even if they pass it tonight and change things.
Yeah, and I didn't know if it was easier to, hey, put it on hold and get all that straight and then vote on it, we're all in agreement, or. You pass something, then you change it, you pass something, change it or whatever, so that'll be something that you.
I mean, and everything is, is a work in progress, I mean, there's going to be subdivisions that go in and we go back and say, hey, we need to change this, we need to do something different, you know, so. E- everything's a work in progress, so.
So anyways, just, I, I think it would be good to take a little more time to talk it over, uh, now, what y'all decide to do, that's fine, but, uh. But I think it might be beneficial to kind of get our ideas together and all be in agreement before we can say, hey, we're all in agreement on this, but anyway, so. Thanks, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right, open hearing is closed. On the new business. New business is going to be ordinance number two zero two four dash one zero.
An ordinance of the city of Hyphal, Arkansas, established, uh, authorizing the establishment of a planned used development area zone under certain, certain, certain conditions, decreeing an emergency, and for the purposes.
Now, Council, like I said just a minute ago, uh, you guys have an option to put this on its first reading tonight. And or pass it all at one time, uh. If you want to put on its first reading, just make a motion that you want to put on its first reading. If you want to pass it all at one time, you'll have to make the motion to suspend the rule requiring ordinance.
Well, they need to, they need to move to suspend, even if it's just going to be on first reading unless they want me to read the whole thing to them.
Okay, so I just need a motion to suspend.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
Jessica makes a motion.
I'll say it.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jamie? Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Now, if you guys want to put on this first reading, just all I need is a motion put on first reading or pass it. I'm going to look at it on this first reading. Justin makes motion.
I'll say it.
Jessica's second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yeah.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Good. Anything else? Good. And so scratch that number ten on the ordinance, that'll go down to the next ordinance. The next one is going to be ordinance number two zero two four dash one zero.
And ordinance rezoning certain lands within the city of Hyphal and owned by Robert and Katie Henderson and for the purposes.
So this land, uh, is over on the east side of the airport, it's on Brush Harbor Road, they're going from industry back to rural residential. About six acres. Anybody got any questions? Does it, uh? Is it isolated, zoning, the whole of the zone is a different zone, I don't know what the map looks like around it. Uh, so just under, looks like on the southeast side, the airport owns land, on the south side, the airport owns land. So residential on the north side. Residential north side, and on the east side, farther over is where the steelhouse spring subdivision is, so.
Okay. My thought process is, is it going to, like, block your land zone, so. Area.
Not spot, not spot zone needs to do that.
Okay. Got it, and it goes back from the industry to residential, which is rural, rural resident, which is farming, which is great. Right, same.
So. But there's not other industrial around it?
There is.
Yeah, I read that there was.
Yes, there, there is other industrial around, so that, but they got it zoned. Under the influx area, I guess, or whatever.
Well, some of the guy rezoned industrial as part of the future, future development, uh, plan for X and A. So these people just bought the land, want to take it back to the residential. Which is not a subdivision or anything, it's just farming.
Did you just say house? It's right next to another, is he saying house, I believe this map correctly.
There's six, there's houses all around.
Right.
I have a re- motion to suspend. Just make some motion to suspend the rule. Except all these ordinance, nobody's made one motion to suspend, make a motion to suspend the rule for all the ordinances tonight.
Reading volume, what is this seeking?
Do you make that?
I made that motion, yes.
Justin makes the motion to suspend the rule or reading all the ordinances tonight.
I second it. I second it.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yeah.
Matt?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
And Justin, did you make a motion to approve this? I did make a motion to approve this from Mr. Robert and Katie Henderson. Justin makes a motion to approve the ordinance. Second, Matt seconds.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Shai?
So. March. Second. And discussion. Yeah, that's actually.
We wanted to do it. But it's not before we do the discussion, we need to know the motion. Second.
Well, we use Robert's rules, if I'm saying that correctly. And we always make a motion second and then automatically vote.
It's supposed to be a discussion after.
I always thought you made the motion, you make the second, now you know what the motion is, so now you can have a discussion and then you vote.
I really don't want to do it, doesn't make difference.
I mean, you understand what we're saying, what I'm saying is, we're, we're discussing before we know what the motion.
Yeah.
But. I've been fine with it for almost two years, so.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number two zero two four dash one one.
And ordinance establishing the city of Hyphal, Arkansas, and up the street program, and for the purposes.
This will have brought to you guys. Last name, somebody entertained one that I thought. How many roads? Want to have anything set up, please, so.
You already asked somebody who wondered about it, right?
They inquire about it, yes, this is why they haven't been the purple to attempt to this first. It's just established as a program.
Yes, sir.
Mayor of all are not. Don't stray.
I move we approve.
Justin makes motion to approve. Just a second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yeah.
Matt?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Next on agenda is ordinance number two zero two four dash one two.
Ordinance signing annexed lands towards within the city of Hyphal, Arkansas, and for the purposes.
Move we approve.
Just makes motion to approve. Any discussion?
Any second.
I'll say again.
Second, any discussion? This, the, this is previous annexed land that we, there's two of them on here that we have to change the wars on.
Just a simple change of one war to another, yeah, because it was a paperwork here, something like that, right? That's a discussion.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Sean, resolution.
Um, I think this jurisdictional boundary. I think that should create. Twenty-one, I think it got fourteen just because it was after that ordinance number thirteen. So that's your resolution.
Two one? Two one dash twenty-four. So the next item on the agenda is resolution number two one dash two zero two four.
Resolution agreeing to a territorial jurisdiction boundary line between the city of Hyphal and the city of Centurion.
But it all worked, vanished, but.
So this is, changes from time to time, so this is the updated recommendation from.
So you have city limits expanding, so this is north of Vaughn Road. Uh, going to be east of Mason Valley, about a mile. Right around where Hutchinson comes up in, into Vaughn Road there. So as, as city limits change, the boundaries have to change because they're not cities, they're just the. Painting area of the city, so this is a recommendation of the regional plan.
Yeah, what's the justification, why do you think? Stay it all, it's the best. We already have an existing territory or line, like wise line.
But it moves that. To remain, the state law says, it's a halfway point. State law says halfway point unless you otherwise agree, but the halfway point keeps moving as Centurton to Pat. Annexes land, or as we annex land, that halfway point keeps adjusting.
Okay, so it's just always, it's always going, every time somebody does annexation, it's.
If it's in between, say, us and Centurton, Centurton annex land, then that, that moves that point, so we have to, we have to adjust that line.
So that's the way I had to say that, so either we'll give you we annex one, or they have a next one, which changes where the value, okay, that helps.
Can I ask a question? No, not yet. I have a question. Well, not yet, there's council discussions already.
So has the city of, of Centurton already voted on this? I see we both have to vote on this.
Yes, I mean, it's, we. I did see a.
Yeah.
Yeah, fine.
Their sentence was signed, the building was.
They said they, they, they're voting, they're very questioned. Is this giving us more land, or is this giving them more land, or do we have a difference?
I really don't know, I mean. I really don't know. I mean, it's just adjusting the line. This is, it's a state law that we have to go outside the city for planning jurisdiction. Personally, I don't, I get, I assume for us stay in the city, but state law, I don't make the rules.
Did the city council say no to this? What, what implications? The city should not say no to this. If the city says no, then I guess, um, Centertown just take more of our planning area. They're doing that already in this scenario, right? That's why I came. No, it's just adjusting mine.
There's no it's not hurting us and it's, it's not doing anything positive or negative for us. It's not expanding our city limits or anything like that. It's just a planning jurisdiction. And really anything on north of Bond, Bond Road that's gonna be eventually Centertown City.
Will that be more roads that we need to take care of?
No, this has nothing to do with, we only take roads in our city. That's, this won't, this isn't, this isn't increasing our, our footprint of our city limits. This is just our planning area. And it's not really increased, just kind of adjusting the line.
Was that, that's what, since I understand it, like it's not actual city limit perimeter, it's like it's planning. So as you said, it won't impact our budget, it won't impact people. This isn't the care for necessarily.
So. Just next motion.
I second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica? Yes. Matt?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is resolution number two two dash two zero two four. Resolution amended, resolution eighteen dash two zero two four, which granted permission and accept the property for annexation to the certain limits of the city of Hyphal. The purpose of this is that prior resolution reflected the wrong, wrong ward. Uh, this should have gone into ward two and, uh, I think the prior resolution set was ward one, but it's just the wrong award. Would we approve? Just next motion to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica? Yes. Matt?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Next item on Jim's department reports. Does council got any questions for hand above heads? Just to speak on something real quick. Uh, we're gonna have to postpone the budget with your budget approval till next month. Just got some word that might have some decently sized larger bills come in. So I'll have to look at that and we're all leave, read us. And so, department heads, you guys got anything for, Cody and I got your questions answered as far as your two younger guys. I'll tell you after this.
Okay.
I think there's anything we can do. Anybody got anything? Council? So, is that the only thing you had, Cody?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Outside of just fundraiser announcements and.
When does that come up for a second, buddy? When does that grant money? Since you got that grant, when does that need to be?
So we received the grant funding within the next couple of weeks. They were sending us a check and we should receive that, but we have some time to use it.
Okay.
Um, I think I've got just shy of a calendar here.
Okay.
To have this.
So pushing the budget back for one month, thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Won't be a problem. Um, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I told you guys last night, the, uh, command Tahoe was picked up. Um, and it is, um, superb. It's amazing. So thank you for letting me get that. Um, the I wanted to brag on a couple of our, um, members of our fire department. So I'd like to start with Tyler Henderson. Um, he's a, he has no background in the fire service. He wanted to come and help our community. And he's part of Chief Webb's drone team. And he's really taken the bolt by the horns on that and he's succeeding and actually making some impacts. Um, he's, they've been on a few, uh, lost people. And he was operating the drone, found him. And there's been several instances where he's really shined. And, um, I just wanted to brag on him. Secondly, uh, Cameron Harrison. He's, he's not gonna like that I'm bragging. Uh, he asked me not to do this, but, uh, as all of you know, the Decatur tornadoes came through and we had several uh, of our members that were calling me on the phone at one o'clock in the morning and saying, hey, we need to go help. We need to go help. So, um, they've got huge hearts. Um, but one thing that stood out to me is an act of service by Cameron Harrison. Um, we had no access to any of the places that we needed to be by vehicle. So, um, we had a group of four or five guys that said, chief, we're gonna go walk. We're just gonna go start making access to these guys. And long story short, they, they cleared several houses and they came upon a gentleman that was standing in nothing but his underwear and a car hard coat. And his house was just demolished. And they went up, made sure he was okay. And he, uh, they asked if there was anything that they could help him with. And he said, man, I just, I can't find any pants. I need some pants. And Cameron Harrison dropped his turnout gear, took his pants off and handed over the gentleman. And finished, uh, about a fifteen mile hike is what it seemed like with no pants on. I mean, outside of bunker gear. And it sounds silly to say it like that, but that to the selfless act, I just wanted to brag on him, uh, in a public view because that's, that's what our job is about. And he's a, the epitome of what a good firefighter is. So I just wanted to brag on him. Um, but outside of that, I don't have anything else. Thanks. Thank you.
So he gave him the pants off of his hand, he ended up the shirt off his back. Pretty good.
Yeah, that.
See, thank you for sharing that with us. That's, that's an awesome story.
That gentleman was very happy.
I bet.
Very appreciative. Anything else? Next item on agenda is financial report, month of May, two thousand twenty-four. Are you entertaining questions? There's no questions or concerns? Just need a motion to approve. How much, make a motion. I'll say it. Just a second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yeah.
Matt?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Next on Jim's community events, farmer's market still going on every Saturday, the city park, eight to noon. I know that's my best when you start coming in, so. Hopefully I'll be going up here before long, sell some tomatoes and squash and stuff. So if anybody's got any extra tomatoes and squash at their house, please take them up to the park and hang out and sell them. If you let us know that you're doing that, we'll sure post it on our Facebook page and try and get the word out. National Night Out is Tuesday, August sixth, seven PM, Silver Metals PLA Field. Mayor's reports. The water, uh, sewer audit is complete. We'll be getting you guys that information. Probably next meeting. US Bank, we, if you remember, we financed the copy machine. And we had the option to go ahead and buy. And if we bought it, we would lose all the maintenance of it that we already paid for. So I made a decision to just keep on leasing. That's last time we ended up buying a copier. We ended up turning around. The leasing copier was out and broke. So we're just continuing on with the, with the same deal that we got going on. And, uh, the Hyphal food truck park, we got word tonight, probably about close five o'clock that it is open. So if you guys know any food trucks, we have a name, a, a number and a name here at City Hall that we'll give out to you. You can call. And I'll get with Tiffany when she gets back from the municipal meeting and try to, I'll tell her on Facebook page. So. Council got any discussion? Shy, you got anything? If you guys haven't been to the brewery yet, it's a fantastic time. It's a nice nice place. They've got good food trucks. So you'll try it out. Hopefully we get some work or when, uh. My name is. And hopefully I can find out some order by next council meeting when we think Lito will be opening that. So once I find out, I'll let you guys know and announce it. So I just need a motion to adjourn. If there's nothing else.
Mayor would like to add, I forgot to mention it up there. We're having our, uh, annual chicken barbecue cook on July thirteenth and we'll be starting at eleven. Try and get some of the early lunch crew. So we'll be doing the drive-through things in order to what we've done in the years past. But just put it on your calendar, July thirteenth, eleven.
Just next motion.
I'll say it.
Justin?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Jessica? Yes. Matt?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.